This is the Tuesday, July 21st work session of the Stafford County School Board. I'm going to call this this work session to order. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We're going to start, we've got one item on the agenda today and it's to discuss the school resource officer program. And Pam, you had requested several of the documents as well as I, so let's let's start a conversation. I'll let you kick it off and then we'll go that way and then we'll swing back around.
Sure. So, um, yeah, can everybody hear me? So basically this meeting is really not to, I think I've heard a lot of comments about getting rid of SROs. So let's put that on the table. That's not the plan. The plan is to review the memorandum of understanding. We were supposed to be doing that every year and get a report and I'm not sure if we've ever seen a report on this. And just going through the document, the memorandum of understanding, I've seen a lot of things that needs detail because it's not detailed. And then I looked at the whole thing and I said, it's not about what's on paper. It's actually the actions of SROs, individual SROs as the different schools, not to blame any specific person. But if you come in and you're a police officer and the responsibilities that you have are from the police officer's school, you are going to to act out, you know, in a manner that you were trained. Some SROs have been with the school system for a very long time and they have been coached and trained and they've worked with certain principals that have been there for a long time and I think they have a good relationship. What I see that there is a problem is actually from the top in terms of how you're operating. If you're operating like you are a task manager and you're out there to fight crime, that's how your SROs are going to act. And so mainly what I'm asking for is there be a better relationship between the the school system and that we have an SRO liaison that understands what the school is set out to be and not be like an employee of the school. I'm not saying now, you know, don't quote me on these things. I'm not saying that their SROs, they are employees of the principals, but what I'm saying is that they have a specific role and we need to make sure that that role is separate from what they're supposed to be doing. You're not there to fight crime before there is a crime. Okay.
Okay. Any any input from from you folks down there?
And I have the, I have copies if I could share, yes.
I think there's two sets there. I think that one is the MOU and one is the the job description.
Yeah, because you can't pass this around because we're so white.
This is just the job description. I have that. I'll take another one.
Burn some papers.
Tear down some trees. We are, you know, we don't get our Facebook post on that.
Has this been added to board docs do you know, Angie?
I do not see it on here.
Thank you.
Wasn't there some question about whether this should be public?
Um.
And has that changed or?
Right, well, I would like to, I'm guessing that this is an opportunity for us to kind of flush out any of the things that we would like to see changed in the MOU. I think the ultimate intent is is to have another work session and bring in Sheriff Decatur and some of his folks and his SRE sergeant or SRO sergeant and SRE is my company.
Yeah.
Company on the brain. And to to kind of address this together as a group and and not have it just, you know, this is what we want and this is what you're going to do. I want it to be collaborative and I want it to, I want to continue the partnership that we have with the sheriff's office. So so if there's if there are specific things in here, if we could go through maybe the MOU.
Do we ever keep records on specific complaints that relate to the SRO from parents or students? Is there any way of tracking that the same way that we track student behavior?
Dr. Kizner might be able to answer that better. I would assume that.
I don't think that there's a tracking.
I would assume that Greg Martin's office is notified when something is reported.
So the, we see, I would almost say it's twice a semester. I've only seen it once, but I saw it actually last year where the school, each high school, a high school report, each high school.
Is your mic on?
The SO.
Just wave at me.
Okay, thank you. The sometime last year, I recall receiving a report that was collected by the school resource officers that broke down the five high schools, the number of incidents and the type of incidents that they reacted to. So that's really all I know. It's not something we collect, it's something this school resource officer gives to, I guess, the sheriff department.
I'm sorry, are you talking about the discipline cases or are you talking about the?
No, so if they were called because maybe there was a trespassing, maybe there was a fight, maybe there was a drug issue, maybe they were asked to counsel a kid, they keep like pretty much like a log. And and that's the only, I've only been here for two years, but I've only seen it one time and last year I saw it.
Okay, but my question more relates to if there is a complaint about the SRO. Does that go to the sheriff or does that go to the principal?
No.
And do we keep records of that?
So the answer is, I don't, I would have to check with Greg Martin. I know I don't keep records of that. My suspicion would be that it would go to the sheriff department because they are employees of the sheriff department. I'm not aware of any incident in which a principal has spoken to me about a concern that was raised to them about a school resource officer.
Angie, can you do me a favor and just make a note of that so that when we do get together with the sheriff's office, those are one of the things that we can?
Well, I, in reading the MOU, I don't recall ever seeing that there was any way of recording that to us and reporting that back to us. But I mean, I know that I've had parents complain to me about the SRO and the way situations have been handed at times.
Okay, so we've, we're going to add that to our list of discussion items for when we sit down with the sheriff. Dr. Chase?
No, I was just making a note myself because it would seem like that would be an important thing for us to have that information.
And the other thing that I was thinking about while we're on, asking Angie to take note, a report, what I didn't see is the, like I mentioned earlier, that report, that yearly report of the number of students, but I would like that by ethnicity in terms of the, some SROs are taken upon themselves to be the police officer when they're not involved directly, like they didn't, were not asked to be, to handle a situation. So they're already there, they handle situation and some of them may get out of hand. So I'm asking, what are the numbers of of suspensions, for example, 10 days? Those are recorded in the, those are recorded, right?
Suspensions?
Yeah.
Oh yeah, of course.
So those are recorded that turn into, what's it called, that that go into that diversion program? That's the diversion program.
Okay, so there's two different things. So suspensions and then maybe students that go into the legal process.
Yeah.
And the, either the juvenile department or the Commonwealth attorney.
Right.
Puts them through a diversion program.
Right, but most of them are suspended, right? Most of them, the fact that they're already in that diversion program, they they were suspended. But if they're not, like either or, any of those that went went away from the school system into that program, I would like to see those numbers.
Okay, so I'd be happy to have that conversation with Sheriff Decatur. That would be something that we would have to receive from them. That wouldn't be something that we would collect.
I think we should get that before a meeting with them.
It's a reasonable request. I think that Greg Martin probably has more intel than we know about. So is he staying or is he?
Yeah, he's here.
He's here? Maybe maybe he can answer those questions for us.
Yeah, yeah. See if he's here. Might as well have him here for this part.
Can I ask one more question?
You can ask as many questions as you want. We have till seven o'clock.
Well, I don't want to do that.
I know, I want, I would like to take my food and go in the back and eat and not have everybody watch me shovel food into my mouth.
I'm curious if we should consider updating the training of our SRO specific to student interactions because dealing with juveniles is different than dealing with adults and dealing with students who are at school may be different than dealing with a kid that they, you know, are on the street. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't add to the discussion something about additional training for our SROs that's relevant, specific to our needs.
Although it says, it says here in selection and assignment of SROs, knowledge of sheriff office policies that pertain to juveniles in schools.
Right.
So, I mean, it seems like it's there, but what are you?
I guess I want more specific juveniles that are arrested by the sheriffs outside of school may be treated differently than addressing an issue that comes up in school.
Right.
I'm just saying that maybe there should be specific training, maybe on cultural awareness, maybe on some other aspects of our needs as they relate specific to school.
Right. So we had a meeting, if I remember correctly, it was last year with the sheriff's office. We had a closed session. Mr. Martin, if you want to come up and maybe expand on that a little bit. We did have those discussions and the sheriff's office is training in those areas, but Mr. Martin can explain a little bit, a little bit more in depth.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so we had a meeting with the sheriff's office that was concerning the task force and they recommended certain things that we we needed in the security department for that task force. And then we had the consultant come and he also recommended some stuff which we recently hired a new supervisor to help us out in the office on threat assessment. So.
I guess one of the questions that Dr. Warner had asked about was that what is the sheriff, the sheriff's office has specific training for their school resource officers, correct?
Absolutely.
And and they've they've covered at least the diversity and the interacting with youth versus being out on the street with an adult.
In schools.
That type of thing.
Absolutely.
So all of that, if you if you can expand a little bit more on what the school resource officer training includes, that might answer some of her questions.
They get a lot of training like that for juvenile, what kind of juvenile crimes in the schools and they get that during, when they go to the academy. There's a, there's a couple of weeks of academy training on that. And they also get training every year from the Department of Criminal Justice. All the resource officers and security officers in Stafford and throughout Virginia go to Norfolk and we have a one-week training on juvenile detentions and the crimes in school and deferments and everything else concerning kids in the school.
So, so I wanted Dr. Warner to finish her her questioning so that I could elaborate on that. The training that they have is specific to policing and how to handle the students in a crime kind of atmosphere. What we need is that they get training, I would suggest that they get training from us, from the school system because it's different. You're dealing with young men and women that are growing into adulthood and they have behavior, they're not criminals. And so I think cultural responsiveness is something that they need. When I suggested for them to have cultural diversity, that they they added that to the program. That's just understanding that there are differences in ethnicity and people look at behaviors different. That's just one area. There's something called cultural responsiveness that you are accountable for your action and implicit bias and those things that come out. You've seen the news, you've noticed what's happening. I'm not here to drill up what's going on, but it's real. It's something that now you can't say that you don't know. It is real. And the percentage of black and brown kids in our school system, a piece of paper is not going to help, it's the behavior of those SROs and whoever's managing those SROs to say, this is how we are going to treat our individuals. And, you know, I have three boys and one daughter and if you treat them different than you're treating, and I'm not beating around the bush here, white students, they could tell. They know because they have white friends. And so when you treat one one way and one the other way, then you know that you're missing a piece of understanding what cultural responsiveness is. And I think that we could offer that to them, so I'm wondering if we could do some kind of working together. Like, we have training. Dr. Kizner, Roxanne's office has training, right?
Yes, but let me just, let me just offer something.
Sure. Your mic is off again?
One thing I, I know we talked about having somebody from the sheriff department. I do know that school resource officers go to, for a specific training to get them qualified to be a school resource officer. And it would be helpful, I think, in this conversation to learn what is their curriculum to borrow an education term because some of these, I don't think there's ever enough to be truthful. I've gone through many and I'm willing to go through many more. So I don't, I'm not saying you imply this, but school resource officers are not just a police officer that got assigned to a school. There's a level of training that's specific to their responsibilities.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Chair?
Madam Chair.
Yeah. So Ms. Young said something that was sort of interesting to me. I see a lot of different kind of training. I guess I'm interested in sort of, and maybe it's there, so I don't know, is developmental, I mean, we have, we have school protection officers, we have middle school SROs and then we have high school SROs. And so interested in in whether there has been any sort of training about the developmental changes that are going on in those particular age ranges that that might affect how you would respond. But I do understand that sometimes in emergency situations, we revert to sort of the automatic and so all the training in the world can sometimes be difficult to overcome that fight or flight response where you're just just responding. So I appreciate the the difficulty, but yeah.
Ms. Young, I can work on that for you.
Yeah, and I think the Vice Chairman.
Hollaback.
Hollaback, a lot of H's here. I'll hollaback at you. She mentioned earlier and I think Angie's taking note that you may or may not have a report that tells of how many students were referred out of our system. And if you.
I don't have the report. I've seen reports that the sheriffs give us on a quarterly basis and it breaks it down as though kind of.
Ethnicity?
Misconduct happened in the school, what, to kids? And it doesn't break it down that way, ma'am. I can ask them if they have a report that would add to what they already have. I can't assure you that they do have it.
I'm sure they do.
I can, well, I would assume they do, but I also think that juvenile intake could tell us when the kids got there and what were the occurrences that got them there in the first place.
That would be great.
Yeah, I can work on that.
If you could share that work before we meet with the sheriff's office.
But one of the other questions that Dr. Warner brought up was, and not sure if you have, is we we received a discipline report earlier, but we would be curious to know, do you ever have or are you in contact with a list that shows the complaints made against an SRO from either a parent or a student or does all of that go to the sheriff's office?
I do not see those complaints.
Okay.
That would be an Internal Affairs, internal thing for them to look into, not.
So you mentioned a report, so have you been getting a report like an annual, there's supposed to be an annual review between SCPS and SCSO?
An annual report?
Yeah, that's what's in the memorandum.
I think it's a quarterly report. I think we get quarterly reports. We gave some, I think we gave one copy to the school board one time. I don't know if you remember receiving it.
I remember.
It had the logo on the front, but anyway.
I think that was around the time that we had.
We had that meeting?
We had the task force establishment committee.
Right, right.
I think that's the only time that we received one.
But I think we get them quarterly. Recently, we've been getting them quarterly, so.
Okay, I haven't seen anything, so.
Okay, I can get those copies. I still have some copies in the office.
Yeah, and I think especially now, now that we're having these conversations and looking to update the memorandum of understanding, I think having that in in the meeting that we have with the sheriff's office will be, it'll be helpful.
If I could just add something. So sometimes the report might not really speak as much about the school resource officer as much as it's talking about the climate of the school or the role that the administration sees of that school resource officer. And also to be taken a step further, one of the challenges, and I don't say this as a criticism, is that sometimes our school resource officers are pulled from their responsibility and then we get a temporary school resource officer or sometimes no school resource officer at all. So it's, when you read these reports, it may not really be totally the reflection of that one officer. And there's one school, which I won't get into specifics now, but I know, I think Ms. Randall would know and Ms., well, it's Stafford High, so it's not a criticism. I hate when nice people do that. Well, every, these two know and no one else knows, but.
That's exactly what it feels like.
That resource officer is very engaged with that school committee, okay? She's, it's a woman. She's very active, you know, she's, she's, you know, what I would say is a school resource officer, we all would want for our children, okay? So she might be involved with things that other principals don't have that type of relationship or if you have in and out of school resource officers. So the reports are important, but I would just not conclude right away that that's a response of too many times a school resource officer is involved or not enough.
So I would prefer that you don't share that information with Ms. Young because she's already upset that Stafford High got Alan Hicks and so she's probably going to be gunning to take that school resource officer up north.
No pun intended.
I'm watching.
I have nothing to do with their assignments.
I'm watching your behavior.
I would like to add to Dr. Kizner, we have some great resource officers.
We sure do.
The ones we have now have been here longer than most of the resource officers I've had. There was a turnover rate that was very high at one point. And the ones I know are very good with the kids. They talk to the kids all day and they're not there all the time looking for crime. They're trying to get a good relationship with the kids and I see it all the time when I visit the schools. But I can only say, what I see, that they're doing a really good job, so.
So, Mr. Martin, as you know, before I came to this meeting, I did interview quite a few principals. I'm watching at the kids, he don't know. And of course, spoke to my kids about this. So I'll give you an example. Mr. Diggs, he was the resource officer for HH.
Lieutenant Diggs, correct.
So he knew the kids from HH.
Yes.
When he moved over to high school, the kids already knew him.
Mm-hmm.
They were comfortable with him, dancing sheriff or whatever they called him. But he had a relationship with them already and so they were not scared of him. There's another principal, for example, middle school. He's in charge of his school, not the SRO. There's some places that the SRO is kind of, you know, has his all like just came in because it was like Dr. Kizner mentioned, transfer came in and they they figure out what they're going to do and and that's it and they're on their way. I was wondering if we should use those experienced SROs to say this, you know, for behavior, to show newer ones how they are to behave and how they are to treat the students because make make the mistake that.
Mentoring.
Mentoring, that's the word I was looking for all day. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Young, one thing is Lieutenant Diggs is now in charge of all the SROs, you know that?
No, that's Palmeroy. Palmeroy is in charge.
No, no, no. Palmeroy's the first sergeant, Lieutenant Diggs is lieutenant above all the SROs.
True, but Palmeroy is the one that they listen and the SROs are listening to right now and he's the one that is like chop-chop.
Yeah, but he still has to listen to Lieutenant Diggs.
The chop-chop right now is running the show.
You see an argument there?
It's a hierarchy.
I'll leave it alone, ma'am.
The chop-chop is running the show right now, so I'm just telling you what I'm hearing. So if chop-chop could become smooth, that's one thing, if not, we could smooth them out.
I have just one more question.
No.
Do we get the opportunity to vet SROs before we are assigning them to schools? I mean, maybe if principals could participate in the interview process, we might find SROs that are suited better for one school, say another or another one.
I don't.
I don't think so.
I think that's completely out of our lane, to be honest.
First of all, it's so hard to find them, ma'am. It's so, you know, we have, we have young kids, 22, 23 years old coming out of the academy and what they want to see is they want to go out and, you know, be a John Wayne, really. And and all of a sudden, you got to try to put them in a, a school with kids. A lot of them don't want to do that. I was a police officer, I know, when I first got them out of the academy, I was gung ho. If someone told me I had to be a resource officer, I'd say, wow, really? I don't want to do that. So it's really hard to find someone who's compassionate to go into a school and to be a good resource officer, so vetting is hard.
I'll go to opposite of Dr. Warner here. It is really, to me, is the principal that needs to have that.
Working relationship.
The working relationship, but he he or she needs to show what he or she is about for the school system. This is the reason why we have professional development to begin with. We're not just skating clean here.
Right.
We need to work on our own, on our internal selves also.
Sure.
Because this is why there are complaints of parents, that there's discrimination, there is implicit bias, there is, you know, hidden racism, whatever you want to call it. Don't send any emails, please. It's white privilege, okay? I'm being blunt. And those things sometimes ride the way how people behave and so it has to come from above. We have a man in charge right now that is super, super wonderful with teachers and when it comes from the top, they know how they need to behave, but they have to go through the professional development, which we started, but we have not completed that yet. And so that's still in process. But I think once we complete that, this COVID just held us up a little bit, but once we complete that where every principal knows that he or she's being, you know, we're looking at your discipline rates, we're looking at your suspension rates, we're seeing the reasons why you're doing it, we're looking at your behavior in terms of how you're dealing with your students and how the SROs are behaving and the number of complaints that they're asking about.
Sure.
It's like a whole 360 picture that, you know.
Mrs. Healy, do you have anything you would like to offer? We haven't heard from you yet, so I want to give you an opportunity to say something.
And Ms. Randall, she hasn't spoken.
Thank you. I had a discussion earlier today with Ms. Young and our experiences have been very different with the the SROs because based on my experience with the schools, I've heard a lot of positive things about the presence of the SROs, relationships with the students, the relationships with the administration, and I have not heard negative reactions. Now, of course, I'm involved with the schools in the Rock Hill district, but we have seven schools in Rock Hill and I think if there were a problem, I certainly would have heard about it at some point or another. I'm not just saying that there's no problems, but I mean, we have our own problems in schools. So no institution or program is perfect, but we do need to strive to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the students. I would be very cautious in making any demands or we could certainly state our expectations and our desires, but, you know, these SROs are employees of the sheriff. They are a presence in our school and, you know, in my opinion, they're a luxury that we, you know, have the benefit of and we certainly have enjoyed that privilege of having them in the schools for for some time.
That we don't pay for.
That's right.
That we don't pay for.
But I think we do have a responsibility that if there are any problems or enhancements that we can suggest, that we send that to the sheriff through our superintendent or through our chair and we let the sheriff be aware of any needs that we need to address or anything that we'd like, you know, the sheriff to look into. And I have no reason to believe that the sheriff would not be, you know, immediately responsive and trying to to help us because he's always been, you know, very interested in the safety and security, you know, of of our students and our staff and willing to, you know, do whatever to help us out. So, thank you.
I would just like to respectfully note that I didn't really hear any problems about SROs until Ms. Young talked some about it and I still have not had a lot of people talk to me, but when I went to this youth forum with a lot of African-American or black youth, they shared, they shared that they had had experiences. So I think we need to be careful as white people to assume that we actually hear from everybody in the community. We may only be hearing from white people and they may be having very. We may only be hearing from white people, and they may be having very good experiences, and we may not be hearing from black students or black parents who may have very different experiences. So, I wouldn't conclude that just because I haven't heard, that it means that, that there, it hasn't been a problem for some members of the community.
And I, I wanted to add to that, that you're not hearing from them in your district, but I am.
Ms. Randall?
I just pretty much would like to kind of piggyback what Spence already said here, in that I would very much like to see this update, our memorandum updated, and make sure that we adhere to the one-year reviews that we need to do. And also, I understand that there is annual, I, I think with the administrators and their SROs, what was I just read?
Performance.
They, the school safety audits.
Yes.
And making sure that we are providing whatever it is. I know last year, I worked with the SRO because a student had a pair of shoes stolen, and went to go look on camera, and a new camera had been installed, but it was not connected to the system. And they'd been asking for a couple of months for it to be connected to the system. So, I just feel like if we have a safety audit, especially in the summertime, if we have an opportunity, to make sure we update, you know, the safety things inside of the building, but also even having an opportunity to know the type of, you know, just to be responsive to our public, is to know some of the courses that these SROs are taking. And because we're all in a, in a, in a new world of understanding and awakenedness to the problems of the African-Americans in our community, then I think that we need to make sure that as we update ourselves on social issues, that we make sure that they are also getting the same updated information, so that as we are learning it, or getting it as a school system, and they are working, yes, as a sheriff's department, but within our school system, that they are also getting that sensitivity. That's how I feel.
And I'm gonna pass the gavel back to the Chair.
Welcome. Thank you. Yes.
Actually, Ms. Hollaback, I'll just let you, you'll know where we are in the rotation of people, so I'm just gonna actually just let you keep going down the line, or however you all were doing it, so I-
Okay, well, we've heard, everybody's had a chance to speak, so, do you have any thoughts on the SRO program? The way we kicked it off was, everybody, you know, we took the documents that were given to us, the MOU and the job description. We haven't really had time to look through it, and I'm assuming that we'll, I'm, I'm assuming that we will all take it home and kind of read it over, and we'll ask Mr. Martin to put together a, another meeting. I, I would prefer that it be a closed-session meeting, because there could be some sensitive things that are being discussed there that we don't want the bad guys to know about. So, what I would suggest is that we take this home, unless there's something blaring right now, or just some general thoughts that you have, Holly, if you want to just throw them out there. But I would suggest that we, we go through this, and, and we send some of our concerns to Sheriff Decatur, let him have some time to mull it over with Lieutenant Diggs.
Combine it to the whole.
And, and then we all get together and kind of have a closed session about, you know, how, how, this is a great document, but what can we do to make it better? So, that's kind of where we're at.
Okay. Were there any other thoughts? I know that we have some new security folks on our side, who will be part of that discussion. Is that true, Mr.?
We have one person coming in, in about two weeks.
Okay.
He's already in Virginia, so, I'm talking to him already.
So, I know that that was a hire we had talked about as well, so I want to make sure we don't, that we have that discussion in light of that person, so it sounds like that's two weeks forward. So, that would be from a planning perspective, let's, you know, wait at least that long. It sounds like we may have some other exciting things going on over the next two to four weeks, however, not to make sure that this gets lost. But if that new individual's gonna be involved in this, I don't want to have discussions with somebody and then say, oh, here. I would like to hear some of their thoughts as well. And I think we can send out some possible dates in the future, but I think it will be three to four weeks from now, just to also let the new person at least know where their desk may be, and kind of get involved. But I think the, as men, as much as we can do on the front end for our board of things that we would like to see, or just ideas that we want to have, all the better. So, all right? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And Chairwoman has included this on the agenda. I'm sure parents appreciate you, and the fact that we're taking care of this right now. This has not been new. This is not new, because of what's going on out there. We've been working on this for over a year, so I'm glad that we're taking care of it.
And if I could just, and if I could just mention, my being late certainly has nothing to do with the particular agenda item, as in the past, I will be, of cour, I watch meetings. Again, I had a work situation that was supposed to be resolved, and I was unable to resolve it to their satisfaction until about 25 minutes ago. And so, I needed to resolve that, unfortunately. Sometimes that comes with the territory, but please know, just my absence, at least at the beginning of this, should not reflect on that I have no, I have grave interest in this, in this topic. And I'm sorry, I was, somebody else jumped up.
I was just going to ask Dr. Kizner if he had anything that he wanted to share with us at this juncture.
No, I mean, I, I appreciate the conversation. I think we have it, we have it incl, oh. And I just want to say something, and I keep saying it, but, but it really is true. I can bring a doctor's note. I'm experiencing hearing loss. So, tonight, if I answer the wrong question, it's not because I'm avoiding the right question. It was a question I thought I heard. And, and I might ask you to repeat it, but anyway, I, you might have already said, you might already said, but we still have that security report that we, we need to go over with, with you guys, of course, but I think if we're gonna invite Sheriff Decatur, I would see a lot of advantage for him to be part of that-
Absolutely.
-that closed session.
And the senior.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, his, his team, I would, I would-
Yeah.
-want his team that, you know, that oversee this whole thing to be there. Palmeroy, and Diggs, and Decatur.
Burges.
Yeah. Yeah. So, all right, well, I guess we, if we have no more discussion, we're done, and we can go eat now.
That's right. All right. We are adjourned. We will be back at seven.
Yep.
Look at the third one down.